Open the meeting and put a select and special meeting interviews. Business on April 12th. Or at 10:53 a.m. Okay. First up will be the interview preparation. Question one and two will be mine. Lucy will take three, Aaron will take four and five. I'll take six. Lucy, you got seven. How do you guys want to do with the others?
The three miscellaneous?
No.
There's two more.
There's two more on that first list.
Okay. I was, I would do the last three of that session.
Right, but what about the, the two there? So I can do the second to last there? And if Lucy, you do the third to last?
Yeah.
I mean, the last last there?
The last last?
In that first section?
Okay.
And then we each take one of the miscellaneous?
Yep.
Don, Lucy, Aaron?
Yep.
Is that good?
That works.
Yeah, that's fine.
And then, one of the things that are not really in here is, do we have enough questions about how they could practically do things like using email, using spreadsheets?
When they give the background of what their skills are?
We'll get an idea of those skills.
She's got it all.
Okay. Okay.
This, this is very detailed. She's, she's
Is that the first one?
Yes. Mrs. Harper.
Okay.
She's very, very good.
And so this, this one is a little bit different as far as the scoring. It's zero to 10 points. Instead of zero to five, and there are different questions within each of those sections. To try to accomplish this score. Listen to this voicemail for a second.
Which was your other one?
Dumpster. Sorry.
I, I just on that one.
Hey, Justin.
You for the first? Okay. My cross sounded Then it should be an L and it looked funny. And then Okay, and then I get to do this one down here. Okay. I'll try not to interrupt your questions this time. I, I just blurted it out because I wanted to under, you know, know what the guy did with mechanic and he hadn't said. And then I realized we were doing alternate questions anyway, and I said, I should have waited till my turn. I didn't.
Just got a message. The Nikki roof. Want the highway to hold off? Putting the We're doing this meeting or?
Oh, well, the tarp shouldn't really
I don't think it'll affect
Cause any problems with the meeting. Unless they felt as in a
I'll just put the tarp in that damn anything.
Don't mind our parents. Let's do, because they are going to have to nail it down. But they don't know how to nail it down because they don't want to nail the wood that's out there. That would may not be good enough to
You can sit right up at the point.
I'm here.
Nothing they do is going to
Yeah. No, there's nothing about it. This is a flat roof right here. Yeah. I say everybody, when we're calling people, they're saying it's by the chimney. We're saying, no, it's above the voting room. There is nothing else above us. So it, it's easy to get to.
Mrs. Harper? Howdy?
Aaron, how are you?
I'm good. Lucy, how are you?
Good things. We're just swimming a little bit. That's all.
That's okay. I can understand.
I didn't appear with us, but then I come in here, so.
They already came in.
Yeah.
We, we tried calling Scott Stinson. Because he works on roofs and like that, but he's heading to a funeral.
So instead of it was more of a roof thing, you know, recommended contact more of a roofer or, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, that we would do on a day that it doesn't rain.
Well.
That's why we thought the tarp might be good idea.
Yeah.
And then Kevin said, yeah, that wasn't a bad idea. He's had an, an appointment.
Yeah.
I don't know what the guys decided.
Well, they're here.
Oh, are they? Oh, good.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I thought if Kevin had that staging that he wanted. They could raise them right up and it would've been easier. Okay, well.
Just waiting for the third member to come back.
Okay.
We'll get going here.
Okay. Hi, Susan. Thank you.
Hey Karen, I'm Don Hefekoski. I'm the chairman of the board. This is Lucy Tesno, the vice chairman. Aaron English, the clerk.
Hi.
We got a bunch of questions we're going to ask you, but we're going to start off with, give us who you are, what your background is and why you're here.
Okay. My background professionally is I worked 21 years at Bay State Savings Bank. And prior to that, well, way prior to that, I had put in 24 years at Digital Equipment Corporation. This is commonly known, now known as VCU, is the credit union, but and then in between I had, I worked for a software development company. And that was called Tracer Research. And then I worked for Cigna Healthcare. Worked for the Quality Management Department. And then I worked at the bank. I, at the bank, I had a varied background. I started out in administrative support. And then I moved on to be the online banking manager there. And I transitioned the bank from no online banking to the online banking platform. And we changed service providers. It was quite a job, quite a challenge. But it was a lot of fun because it was involved in a lot of technical aspects in addition to the banking knowledge. So it was really an incredible experience. And then from there, I went to being branch supervisor at the Auburn branch. And yet again, another big difference, you know, because I was doing direct customer interaction where with online banking, it was, you know, all online. So
Yeah.
And we moved here in 2009. We moved from Worcester. My husband's a retired firefighter. And from the city of Worcester. And we had done some shopping around for land and all that, and we built in 2009 and was very much involved with Lucy at that time. Conservation.
Conservation.
Yeah. 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 I just remember they tried so hard from D E P to come down and find a wetland plant. Yeah, I mean, it was, it was, I think, that was an experience in and of itself as well. I mean, very big learning process, a lot of research on our part, you know, and we had a cease and desist order because of the wetlands and the swell coming across the road. And we had a reposition where the house is going to be built and we changed builders in the process and it was quite an experience, you know, in addition to learning about building a house and choosing all the different things that you want. We had to learn all the things about the the land and the property and the rules and, you know, what is, you know, safe to do and not safe to do and all that. So I'm an animal lover, so when we have the bears, I talk to them. We had moose in the yard the other day, see them dancing around and you know, just having a grand time. And then the day before that, we had three reindeer come in. So and then we had one year, haven't had it for a couple of years, but one year we had this big, huge turtle. And she just rested herself right there. I went out and talked to her and took pictures and so, you know, obviously we have our sanctuary next to us and have great pictures of hummingbirds and woodpeckers and so just loving it. Good. I'm glad to hear that. That sounds good. Yeah.
We're each going to ask you a series of questions.
Okay.
Take your time. How do you ensure accuracy and attention to detail when handling sensitive documents or data?
That is one thing that I really focus a lot on the accuracy of everything that I do. I cross check everything that I'm using as a source for the information. And then if I'm really taking it and putting it into, let's say, another application or another form or whatever, you know, I just cross check and make sure that everything is accurate and everything is the same that it's supposed to be. Doing it online, you can, there's a lot of checking you can do, you know, especially if you're using a spreadsheet and that type of thing. You can do a search to compare data and make sure that you make the corrections and all that. An avid user of spell check to make sure that there aren't any errors and that side of things. But in terms of the technical accuracy of, of the detail, I always do a, you know, a very detailed check to make sure before I proceed to go on to the next step. And then if I go on to the next step and there should be any discrepancy in how things are working out, I'll go back and double check to make sure that it's a true discrepancy in, in what I'm trying to analyze or, you know, compute and make, and highlight what that is and then find out what the right thing is to do with that. If that's the way the data is supposed to be represented, if there's some sort of correction, then there'd be a footnote that would be required to explain what the difference is, that kind of thing.
Okay. Thank you. What strategies do you employ to prioritize and manage multiple tasks?
The first thing would be what the deadline is. And then the second thing would be the urgency, not just the deadline, but the urgency in terms of what has to be done. A deadline might be a week away, but there may be some things that are involved in it that require some extra steps. You know, so I'd have to take a look at what the whole project is to make sure that I can assess what I should be starting first and, you know, if I can have multiple things going on at the same time, what I can put aside for follow-up, if I have to reach out to somebody for feedback or for other information or answers or whatever, you know, I'll put that and I'll prioritize it and I'll, I'll set a calendar up for that.
Very good. Thank you.
How would you handle an irate customer and still maintain professionalism and courtesy? So that's an excellent question and I do, I did have them occasionally, you know, at the bank when things didn't work out the way that they wanted them to work out. And basically just say, you know, step back for a second and just say, okay, let's take a look at the whole thing. You know, they'll, sometimes somebody will come in really irate, you know, and just, you know, want an answer right away. But you really need to take a look at, basically at all the details, you know, taking a minute, just calm down. I'm sorry you feel that way. And let's see how we can work this thing out and find out what the real issues are. Sometimes it, you don't really solve the issue. You know, but at least the customer feels as if you took the time to identify what the real problems were. And if it's something that they get an error, you know, you don't point out that it was their error. But it kind of like evolves to them realizing, you know, how the transaction or how the event transpired and what the reasons were and the causes and okay, let's see what we're, where we can go from here, how we can fix it.
Can you provide an example of a time when you had to resolve a conflict or disagreement within a team or within, with a member of the public? Can you think of an example where you dealt with that?
Can you be a little bit more?
So thinking back, is there a conflict that you had, let's say with a coworker? And maybe the strategies that you'd kind of talked about previous, maybe how it ended up?
Okay. Well, what's coming to my mind is I was also involved in training new hires that came on board. And I, I recall one time where the new hire had previous banking experience. So the first input that I received was that you don't really need to spend a lot of time with this person. And that came from management, you know, because, you know, this person has X number of years of banking experience and all that. Well, it turned out that the banking experience was like five years prior. They had been experienced in between. So I had to recalibrate how that training was going to take place. And it was indefinite and conflict with what the manager's perspective was and perception was of how to proceed. So what I ended up doing was talking with the manager and I had to get HR involved because it was a training kind of issue. And even though I wasn't quote unquote, the trainer for the bank, I was chartered with doing this particular training. So we had to establish, you know, what the strategy would be. And I didn't want to, you know, do anything that was going to put the manager in a negative light, you know, but at the same time, I'm doing the training and, you know, I was feeling as if this person really needed some in-depth, you know, back to basics kind of training. So that's where I wanted to start. So we came to a middle ground where we didn't actually start from ground zero, if you will, with the, the training. What we did was we let her, the, the new hire, do some transactions and I was able to view and, you know, watch what she was doing and then from there develop a unique training focus for that. So it worked out in the long run, but it was a little bit, you know, tricky because they expected this person because of her background for one, you know, to come right on board and, and, you know, start doing the, the telework. But that wasn't going to happen once I realized, you know, one, it was a quite a while ago, five years is a long time, technology changes and all that to bring her up to speed. And, you know, so it, it worked out, but it was, it, it, it it was a little testy, a little bit, you know, because the, the person who was hired was also told that, you know, she would be able to jump in right away. So she kind of did jump in, you know, because she got to do some mail transactions, but I benefited from it by able to customize, you know, how we were going to proceed from there. And then we, the, the four of us actually, the manager, HR, the new hire and me plotted out a plan to move forward. So, but it was
It was the best possible outcome, but not necessarily the way it was envisioned
Right.
At the beginning and you
Right.
found a way to
Right. So I wasn't the only one that had to adjust. Everybody else did too. But everybody was on the same page once we got things rolling. So, but you know, I mean, it's when you have some, when you have expectations set up. You know, it's, you, you kind of like have to be, if you're the person that has to be the bearer of the bad news, well, hey, this isn't going to work. You kind of have to like take it from everybody's perspective and, and play it out that way. So it does require some extra stuff.
Yeah. What steps do you take to stay updated on relevant regulations or procedures? So I'm sure in banking, there were changes. Can you imagine, I'd say in municipal government, how you would stay up to date with relevant regulations or procedures?
Again, I think the basic thing would be first, you know, talking with everybody that I'm, you know, working with. And the other one is just as in banking, staying up on what all the regulations are personally. You know, there's ongoing training all the time that takes place. And without that, then there's, you know, it's, it's your own personal interest, you know, to stay up to stuff on whatever regulation changes there might be. I'm an avid user of the website to make sure, you know, that what I'm thinking is in sync with what the real regs are. And if they're not, then I'll reach out and ask questions, you know, because it's really important to be on top of, you know, what's going on because that way whoever you're servicing, you know, they're expecting you to know. And if you were to be communicating incorrect information, then it's, you know, going to cause all kinds of things in the long run. So but, you know, first source would be, you know, locally. And then next I would, you know, go to the website and make sure that everything is in sync. And if it isn't, then again, you know, reach out to whomever I'm working with or whatever the situation and project might be, just to say, oh, did you know? This is what this document says or this rig says. Am I interpreting it wrong or, you know, was there some, something that we're accommodating differently because of different rules that apply here, you know, that kind of thing? Because that happens in banking too.
Yeah, we, the town clerk belongs to an association. The secretary of state's office very much is involved with what the town clerk does. They have resources. And then there are resources amongst the town clerks in the area.
Yeah.
That certainly would be good resources.
Yeah. Yeah, but generally, I mean, there's, there's a, you can tap into all kinds of resources and, you know, if you don't get what you need, then the whole thing is all around communicating to, you know, find out, you know, okay, what am I missing and where do I go from here kind of deal? So.
Okay.
How do you maintain confidentiality when dealing with sensitive information?
Again, that was very important, you know, in the banking industry and when I was working at digital for, I mean, at digital, if you will, that's where I grew up from a technology perspective and a lot of things are very confidential. And if somebody doesn't have a need to know, if somebody is not authorized to know, then you don't share. And many times, even with customers, you know, I mean, there's just so much that there's a line that you can get to and you just don't communicate everything, you know, you find a way to get the message across, but you don't communicate, you know, all the unauthorized details, if you will. And again, you know, sometimes it's very sensitive and sometimes it's, you know, you just can't share. But depending upon what the scenario might be, again, I would go to whomever I'm working with, whoever I report to and say, you know, this is a problem, you know, because I can't share this information, but it has a direct impact on, you know, what the outcome is going to be. And what the takeaway is for the individual that I'm not letting them know this detail. But then there's a high risk or, or low risk, you know, if we, you know, proceed and share more than what we're supposed to share. It can be sensitive, but you gotta, you gotta understand what it is you're supposed to share and not share and take it from there.
Thank you.
Okay. Can you describe your experience with using software databases in keeping your records and data management? Okay, mostly I use Excel for a lot. My home records. I do cost analysis, budget analysis if we're and I also did that when I worked at the bank. One of the things, as you can imagine, is sales was a very big, important issue. Mortgages and that. And I became the go-to for Excel spreadsheets and tracking budgets, goals and objectives to actual spending. And doing charts that, you know, showed what the performance was. And that type of thing to be able to keep track of where we were. I also did budgeting on my own behalf when I was the online banking manager. Obviously I would have a budget that I'd had to adhere to, adhere to on an annual basis and on a monthly basis, I would always do budget tracking to see where we were, how is mapping against the goals and that kind of thing. So I use a lot of Microsoft applications. I use PowerPoint for presentation purposes and Publisher as well for document purposes, that kind of thing. So.
How do you ensure that all paperwork and documentation are completed accurately and in a timely manner?
Again, that goes back to setting up what the deadlines are for each in particular, each document. Every document would probably have a set of people who have to review it. And so we set up what that review process is and when they, I'm expecting the feedback, you know, back and stay on top of that and remind people, you know, that comments on whatever the document is, is due by, you know, I haven't received any comment yet. And then making sure that I did receive everything. And once I did, if there's any sign-off that has to be accomplished, then to make sure we get the right sign-off in place. And maintain all of that, either electronically or in paper, either way. I do a lot of scanning and PDF documents and everything. So, I mean, you can sign PDF documents and you can insert what the signature requirements are and that. So if people aren't available, then you can always do a PDF and have it sent out for signature and get the comp back and maintain it that way. Can you discuss your approach in collaborating with other departments or agencies within the local government? I don't have any experience in doing that, but I think it wouldn't be much different than, you know, reaching out to, you know, departments that need to be involved and making sure that I'm communicating with the, the right people. And if I'm not to, you know, find out who the right people are. And just, you know, basically keeping an open dialogue with everybody that I'm supposed to be interfacing with.
Tell us about a suggestion that you made that has benefited your organization that you've worked for, any of them?
Okay, this is going back, they used to have a bright ideas program at the bank. And one basic one that was kind of fun. And it kind of narrowed down what the bank was doing and actually single sourced out what the supplies were, but they had every department and every branch doing their own supply ordering. You know, so they would be using, the branches were mostly in Worcester, but they had one in Auburn and Holden. And so they would be ordering their supplies from whoever the office service supply was locally. And that kind of, that was when I was there, working for it, doing the administrative support. And so I said to myself, this was kind of like crazy because my previous experience was that if you had a relationship with a service provider, you know, like WB Mason or Staples or whatever, then you can establish better pricing, you can establish better servicing. And the departments can still do their own ordering, but it's within the, you know, parameters of what the relationship is with the service provider. So I made that suggestion and lo and behold, that's the way that they went. And so it was a lot of fun. You must have had some other really good ideas because I see that you had the president's award, the bright ideas award recipient and employee of the month.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, I did all of that. On the president's award, I did community service. I mentored a student at Deveraux. And they were very much, the, the top management at the bank was very much involved in what was, you know, going on at Deveraux. So I mentored a student there for a couple of years and with the amount of service time that I put in and doing that, that's how I got the president's award and I got that two years in a row. So Very nice. Yeah. That was very nice. Excellent. So. What about this position now that you're applying for attracts you the most? It's being in touch with what's going on in the town and, you know, staying on top of everything and seeing how I might be able to contribute to make things run smoothly. And, you know, just become more knowledgeable of what's going on. I wanted to do that for a while, but, you know, I was very much involved in, you know, the other banking aspects, but and then when I saw that, it was actually after we came to meet with Maribel when Kevin needed to have the document not arrived and I got home and I got on the computer and I said, hey, they didn't say anything. You know, so I just took it as, you know, my chance and opportunity to go and talk and see what we could work out.
You've seen kind of the, the, a few of the job description goals of what we're hoping to accomplish with this clerk assistant. What would you say are the top three skills that make you the best candidate for this type of position?
One, I would say attention to detail for Um, one, I would say attention to um detail for the tracking and everything that you mentioned in the, you know, description on the data um that you um want to be able to maintain the accuracy of the data and cross checking and making sure everything is correct. Um, and the, the other one I would say is communication. Um, you know, just if I don't understand something, then I've got to speak out and, you know, find out, you know, what is and what isn't, and um maybe I'm missing something, um, you know, there's always different avenues to follow. But I think those two things is the attention to detail and communication.
Nice.
I just happened to notice graduate of New England School of Financial Studies at Babson. Babson graduate also.
Are you? Yeah.
Enforcement Management, yep.
Oh, very nice. Um, that was a huge opportunity that I was given actually by the president of the bank at the time. Um, my direct manager didn't think that, you know, I was really qualified or whatever, but the president thought otherwise. And the, uh, my manager said, well, you know, you're going to be away from home and this and that. But it was a fascinating experience. Um, and again, I got to do, um, you know, a lot of different research, not just on the bank, but in the financial industry in general. So um it was a two-year program and I graduated in two thousand and eleven. And um in the midst of doing that, in I'm doing that, that's when I was also doing the conversion and online banking from a service provider to new service provider. So it was very um entailed and talk about detail to pay attention to. It was, it was, it was challenging and a lot of fun.
One thing that struck me about Babson was the cafeteria, food in the cafeteria, just from all over the world.
It, and it.
It was great.
And it was huge meals. I mean, it was just, you know, it was just crazy.
I put on weight.
Are you still a certified notary public?
Yes.
It may come in handy.
Um, expires in twenty-eight, I think.
Okay.
Mine too.
I have a follow-up.
Good.
Uh, a couple of follow-ups. Um, how, about how many hours are you open to uh working a week? And are you aware that um the town um has a interim position right now? And will potentially either have an elected or a future appointed position as the actual town clerk?
Um, do you want me to answer the second one first?
Yeah, whichever way you want.
Um, yes, I am. Um, and I also um explored that and was hoping that that might be, you know, an opportunity to put out on the table. I know that that requires, you know, to be voted in and all of that. Um, but yes.
Okay.
Um, and then I'm open to talk about the number of hours. Um, I know that it was, you know, as needed, so, you know, that could be as little as an hour, I suppose, on, you know, some scenarios. And it could be, you know, up to forty in another scenario. So um right now, you know, I'm, I'm pretty flexible. Um, I am still in the process of pursuing a part-time um job. But um again, I'm flexible and, you know, we can work that out as.
Yeah, I, I was saying, like, if um the position of town clerk became available, right now it's estimated about fifteen hours a week.
Yeah.
Would that be an issue for you?
No, no, no. Now, would there be, would you, would it be a schedule or was it be, you know, hey, we need you to do this? Can you do it now or can you do it in tomorrow or that kind of thing? Is it the?
For the assistant one, I think it's kind of as needed.
Yeah.
Um, but potentially if there were a future position, there are some set office hours. Um, but then there are hours that are done outside of the.
Yeah.
The office hours.
And I, um, to be honest too, I um even at the bank, I did a lot of work from home. Um, you know, I never just let it stay at the branch or whatever. So I have a, you know, computer access at home and all that. So I, that's how I keep up with the spreadsheets and everything. Um, pictures and I might do pictures and all that.
Additional hours with the elections through.
Then that would be especially the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the elections take off a lot of time.
Yeah, that's.
Away from the town clerk.
Yeah, so again, the elections are set dates. Yeah. You know, so you just work the schedule, you know, around that and um take it from there. But um I'm pretty flexible.
Okay. And this year, of course, is the big, biggest election of them all, so that is going to take quite a bit of time.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. Anything else?
Nope.
We'll see.
I'm, I'm all set, yeah.
Do you have any questions of us?
So, well, we kind of answered them along the way, um, you know, with, you know, the demand and, you know, what your expectations are. So um, you know, I just want to reinforce that I think I would be able to, you know, participate and help with the, the town management. And I think it would be, it would be fun as well as productive.
And exhausting.
And, well.
The reward is great.
Can be, yes, but. Yeah, it can be frustrating, I'm sure, if you don't get what you need when you need it and that type of thing. But, you know, there's ways to work it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for coming in.
Fuzzy, yeah, but that's okay. And when I walk out, it's probably going to downfall like crazy.
Well, at least we have a tarp on the roof now, so.
Yeah, I know. As long as you don't get the wind, because you know what it'll do to it.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah, the noise and it'll tear it.
Oh, boy.
We get really bad.
Good morning.
Is um.
Who's the next one?
Low on this schedule for Tuesday, okay.
Hi there.
Hello.
This is Max, this is.
Morning.
Capital State Chairman Lucy Tannen, Erin Langley, the Board of Selectmen.
Max, I'm going to ask you a series of questions.
Yep.
Before we get started, why don't you just give us an overview of who you are and why you're here?
Okay, so my name is Max Blue. Um, I recently graduated Suffolk University um in December. I still don't have my diploma yet because I studied abroad and the study abroad university, which was Glasgow University in Scotland, has not, well, they failed to send the um my grades on time. So they now have them and I have all the credit, so I should be great to graduate. I was really hoping to graduate in December, but it didn't happen, so I'm graduating in May, I guess.
Yeah.
But I already have all the credit, so.
Good.
Kind of just in limbo waiting, but um, so I've handed out my resume if you guys want.
Yep.
We have it.
They have it.
You have, yeah.
I perfectly, I printed extras just in case.
Right.
Um, yeah, so I graduated with a three point eight six GPA, which I think is pretty good. I'm not really good at bragging about myself, but very proud of that. Um, so yeah, so then I'm here because I really want to get involved with municipal government. Um, and work to help towns kind of improve themselves and implement whatever the town vacuum needs. So I'm really looking for experience. I'm kind of young, so I'm definitely looking forward to um just any kind of experience in the role as assistant town clerk and accomplishing whatever you guys need, so.
I, I just happened to look at this, um, American Revolution reenactor.
Yes, so I reenact their evolution.
All right.
Um, yeah, so I'm a corporal in that, I really love education, I'm in history. I saw your guys' uh placard from Thomas Paine. I didn't actually know he wrote a poem on the library, so I was out there looking at it, that was really cool. Um, yeah, so I got involved with that around twenty seventeen, I guess it says on there, that was a little bit early. But yeah, that would be right, twenty seventeen, so I was fifteen years old. Um, so I really loved, I used to, I live in Sturridge, so I used to go to Old Sturridge Village all the time.
Oh.
And living history really like resonated with me. I love learning stuff and uh more kind of hands-on stuff. And so the American Revolution is kind of the way to go, a little bit less political than Civil War and so.
Okay. All right, let me ask you, how, how do you maintain accuracy and attention to detail when handling sensitive documents?
Um, so with handling sensitive documents, I would obviously make sure to double check everything, make sure everything's on my local file, not on like a shared document, if it's sensitive, I guess. Um, I'm very computer literate, so I know um a lot of the different systems. I also know a little bit more about computers, like the files and stuff, and I understand how to change all that kind of stuff. Um, but keeping it safe, yeah, it's definitely a priority. I definitely wouldn't uh put it on a shared file, I guess, that's like I said, and make sure it's saved to the local drive. And then obviously not share that local uh file or drive with anyone, that would be important, so.
Which strategies would do you employ to prioritize and manage multiple tasks? How would you do that?
Um, I guess I would do it like I did at school. So if I'm working on different things, I usually like to keep a bunch of different tabs open on my computer and just plug one at a time and make sure that I'm not doing too much at once. Because if you do too much at once, you're going to make mistakes. So you want to just focus on one at a time and then, you know, do it, whatever is a priority. But finish whatever you need first and then move to the less important stuff later to make sure you're consistent and not making any mistakes.
Okay, we'll see.
How would you handle a challenging or irate customer while maintaining professionalism and courtesy?
Um, yeah, so I guess while at the mailroom at Suffolk, uh, some people maybe got a little bit impatience because we worked a lot with um the different academic departments there and we would, you know, handle packages and stuff. And sometimes the packages would have hiccups or something. Um, you know, yeah, to keep in mind, it's not personal to you, they're not angry at you, they're angry at like their situation. So you try to empathize with them and understand where they're coming from. Um, to make them feel heard and like you care about them and respect them, while also not taking their anger personally at yourself.
Uh, can you provide an example of a time when you had to resolve a conflict or disagreement within a team and how did you handle it?
Um, okay. So I guess within a team, uh, I guess during my study abroad experience, we had a group project. Um, and often group projects can get, you know, a little bit intimidating, I guess, they're not intimidating, but people don't always get along. Um, and so usually, like I said before, you know, try to understand where the other person's coming from and then try to reiterate your point of view in the most respectful way. Um, and maybe try to convince them, either join your side or compromise and agree with what they're saying. Um, so I guess we were working on a product, um, there was a presentation for an environmental class I was taking there. I forgot the name of the course. We're going to give a presentation and we all kind of had different ideas about where we wanted it to go. But in the end, uh, we didn't have compromising and we kind of had a mix of um what we wanted to do. And we didn't have compromising and we had different people speak on different things that they were maybe more knowledgeable about. Um, and me obviously being an American there, I talked about more American issues while they talked about more Scottish issues.
Uh, what steps do you take to stay updated on reg, relevant regulations or procedures? Um, so how do you stay up to date with uh things like that?
Um, I actually subscribe to a lot of the State House news uh sources, so I like doing that. A lot of my friends uh who went to Suffolk with me are now all work at the State House, so they also tell me a lot of the inside stuff. I think there's supposed to be an agricultural survey, maybe that you guys have heard about, I don't know. But my tribe is sending an agricultural survey to all the town clerks, um, which maybe the state will be giving more money to farmers, so. Um, yeah, usually I like to subscribe to the State House news and then follow what they say.
I noticed um you were an intern, was it a summer internship with Senator Gobi or?
Um, yeah, kind of. Wasn't um super official, like I wasn't paid or anything.
Okay, fair.
Um, because again, I was young at the time and I wasn't in college, so I was just in high school. Um, but yeah, so I was an intern for uh Senator Gobi. Um, it must have been, yeah, a year in high school. Um, but the main things I did uh was work on the crumbling foundations issue. So a concrete company in Connecticut had sold concrete, which when exposed to high humidity, which we had that summer, the concrete would actually crumble. And so it was very sad seeing um, you know, families who invested money to like make sure their house is okay, have their foundations start to crack and uh crumble. And so it's uh very empowering and actually why I want to get involved with municipal government. I'm working on or helping her district um legislate, or like her district person work on submitting uh resolutions and stuff for what the actual bill should be and what kind of relief these uh people wanted.
And it's still held up unfortunately. They haven't, they haven't uh given any financial support yet to those homeowners.
No, I thought.
No, and more, more of them are crumbling now.
And they have to like pick the whole house up and then repour a foundation around it.
I saw that on a couple of roads coming in from Sterling, the houses were sitting up. I said, I knew what it was, I knew what the problem was, but it's still going on.
And then um in addition to that, I also worked um preparing for the census. Um, so basically I would compile all the data from the twenty-ten census and then we would try to work together to make projections for the twenty-twenty census. And when it came out, uh, I believe they used the data for comparisons, but the data hadn't come out when I uh left, so.
How do you maintain confidentiality when you're dealing with sensitive information?
It's confidentiality, so I would ensure you're only talking to the people who I guess are approved to know about it. So I don't know how you guys would go about that in like the office of knowing who's allowed to know what or what kind of records are allowed to be shared, I assume. Well, I guess, do you want to tell me?
There are guidelines, state guidelines.
Okay. Well, I would have to research the guidelines and make sure I'm following them. I wasn't sure if you guys had like on the paper, it said confidential or something on it. Or maybe that might be something good to add, I don't know.
I mean, there, there's some of that, and then there's some that are public record. So there definitely is a, a, a balance between what is confidential and then what is considered public record. And that is all spelled out in uh lengthy um documents.
Yeah.
Can you describe your experience with using software or databases on record keeping and data management?
Yes, so I definitely can on data management. Um, so at Suffolk, um, I took a data analysis and politics course, which is all about data and how to analyze it. Um, we use a coding system called R, which I believe is free actually. Um, and it helps run statistical analysis, it'll also store the data and you can chart the data however you want on there, which is really cool. So you can compile all the data you need um and chart it however you want, and I know how to do all the coding, so that was cool. So, yeah.
How do you ensure that paperwork and documentation are completed accurately and in a timely manner?
Um, so accurately, I would definitely double check, if not triple check, everything. Um, usually, um, if you're taking like hard numbers from a paper or something, yeah, I would just double check it or triple check it. Um, and then I would re, I don't know how to describe this, sorry. I could, can you repeat the question?
Yeah, I mean, you've answered it, double check and triple check. It's not just, you know, you put it in and you're done, you follow up and you.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess so if you're looking at a paper and there's discrepancy during the double check, then you gotta double check it again and just keep double checking until everything looks perfect.
Great.
Or is perfect.
Can you discuss your approach on collaborating with other departments or agencies within the local government?
Um, yes, so our approach is everybody is doing their own job, right? And so they obviously want to prioritize their own stuff, but you obviously want to be communicative and have very friendly relations with your coworkers. Like you want to be enthusiastic about what you're doing and you want to, you know, hopefully they're enthusiastic about the work that they're doing too. Um, so I would just be super friendly. Um, you know, maintain professional relationships with everybody and just clear communication, I would say, is probably the main thing. Like you don't want um them to be confused about what you're asking them if they have a, if you have a problem and you're coming to them. You don't want them to be confused about the problem or like throw a question their way that they. Or like throw a question their way that they definitely wouldn't know about. That you also don't know about. You should try to make sure you know who you're talking to and what they understand and stuff like that.
Good, good.
You uh, tell us about a suggestion that you've made that has benefited an organization that you've worked in?
Um, yes, so at FlexCon, which is a label adhesive company in Spencer. Um, we were working a lot, so I was in the packing department. Um, and so our goal was to make sure everything was secured to pallets, well, the label adhesive was secured to pallets. And strapped correctly, correctly, so make it across the United States and, you know, to global suppliers. Um, but the main thing that I guess needed improvement was the way we did. Um, they organized everything, everything was kind of loosely organized. Um, so instead of doing paper manifests where you would paper and then you would have to print out all these slips and you would count it up and stuff. And you'd have to count it at the very end, make sure everything matched. It was a lot easier, and I guess I kind of suggested this, that we put it on the scanner gun that we were using. So instead of hand counting it, the computer could just do it for us. And so that made everything a lot more efficient, because you, instead of having to count all the labels that we had, which was the old way. The computer would just tell you how many labels you had and then you could just see, instead of wasting all the time counting.
Efficiencies.
Yeah, by all means. What is there about this position that attracts you the most?
Um, oh, there's a lot, but I'm definitely excited to learn, um, and I really want experience. Um, so yeah, I guess the learning part to me is what's so exciting. I love learning, like the reenacting, it's all about learning. I just love to learn, I love learning new stuff. And I really want to help out a local municipality or town achieve their goals. So even if I might not like agree with everything that the voters of Oakham say, I would love to implement to the best of the ability. To the best of my ability, you know, what their wishes are and create the best system that benefits you guys.
What would you say are the, your top three skills that make you the best candidate for this position?
Well, definitely good with data and um, you know, coding around data and stuff like that. So I'm definitely good with that. I'm also very detail oriented. I like to make sure. Everything is, you know, the way it should be kept confidential if it's confidential. Um, and then lastly. Um, I'm very enthusiastic, so I'm very eager to learn, I'm very, you know, happy to be here. Well, I'd be happy to be here, working here. Um, I don't know. Yeah, and I love helping people and I think that those two go together and I feel like I could definitely help a lot of people in the position, so.
I re-asked the question I asked of the last candidate. Um, approximately, how many hours are you um, hoping to work in a week? Um, and if they were a position, so this is right now a per diem as needed. And if there were ever a position available, let's say fifteen hours a week on a regular basis, um, is that something you'd be interested in?
Yes, I signed a guy's website that I might be elected and I don't live in the town, so I don't know if I could do it if it's elected. But if it's appointed, I would definitely be uh, interested in doing it fifteen hours a week.
And, and as a per, let's say if it's the assistant position, which is not an elected, um, and would never be an elected. Um, about how many per diem hours would you be hoping to have? As much as possible?
Yeah, as much as possible.
I'm all set, thank you.
I'm all set. Excellent, thank you very much for coming in.
Alright, thank you so much for having me.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good rest of your day.
You too.
Thank you, you too.
I think the next one is actually a Zoom one, right?
Yes.
Yep. Fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes. Take a fifteen minute break.
Okay. Go with that?
Yep, we'll take a fifteen minute break.
Fifty-three. Third and final candidate for assistant clerk. Sarah, we're gonna ask you a bunch of questions, um, just take your time answering them. But before we get started, would you just give us a, like a back, your background and why you're here?
Uh, yes, so I have a pretty diverse work background. I've done a lot of different things from food service to childcare to education, um, and I'm here because I'm actually moving to Ocam in about a month now, yeah, a month, uh, and I wanted to be a little bit more involved in the town I'm gonna live in.
Okay, thank you. Alright. How would you ensure accuracy and attention to detail when handling sensitive documents or data?
Hmm, uh, well, just as a starter, if I'm recording everything, I like to read it at least three times just to make sure. I did a lot of that, especially working in education, um, recording things for our records and, and behavioral uh, notes and stuff like that. I just like to triple check everything I can, and if I'm not sure about something, I try to ask um, someone to, uh, check as well, just to make sure we have the right information.
Right. What strategies do you employ prioritize and manage multiple tasks?
Uh, it depends on the scenario. I like to, usually if I'm working for someone, I like to ask them what like the top three priorities are and then work down from there. So make sure I'm getting the main things that need to get done before I'm moving on to smaller tasks or subcategories of each task. Uh, it just depends on what we're looking for that day or what needs to get done.
Yes, thank you.
How would you handle a challenging or irate customer while maintaining your professionalism and courtesy?
Uh, uh, something I've done before for sure. Um, I I, I like to try and reassure people that I, I hear their frustration and it's, it's perfectly okay to feel that way and that I will do the best that I can to find a solution for them. Um, while also being realistic about sometimes, you know, there is no solution sometimes. Um, unfortunately, you know, maybe something has been misunderstood or, um, they were given wrong information. So I, I try to assure people that what they're feeling, if they're angry about something is okay. Um, and I'll just, I'll do the best I can rectify the situation, um, regardless of the circumstances.
Can you provide an example of a time when you had to resolve a conflict or disagreement within a team or with a member of the public?
Hmm. Definitely, definitely a couple. Um, more than just like food industry, working in education specifically, we definitely not necessarily conflict, but everyone had a different view on how things should be done. Um, and so, uh, we've had a couple, I'll, I'll keep it in the, the Vegas terms just for like confidentiality purposes. Um, we had, um, some meetings over some behavior issues we were having with a specific student um, that were really frustrating for everyone. And I know I had two team members who felt very, very differently about how we were supposed to handle the situation. Um, and so what I did in that circumstance was I tried to both in those meetings and also sort of outside them, tried to talk to them about like why they were feeling that one way was, was wrong and the other way was not. And maybe if they could sort of find a middle ground between the two, just so we could best serve that student and, um, keep up a camaraderie between all the members of the team.
Uh, what steps do you take to stay updated on relevant regulations or procedures, uh, with the job that you're working?
Oh, uh, again, depends on the job. Obviously, right now I, I nanny, so that's a little bit more insular. Um, but just in general, um, with a lot of the larger jobs I've worked, I, I check my email daily. Um, I check in with coworkers if I know something was going on that we were about to have a change with. Um, as always, I, I try to keep up if there's a handbook or a set of rules or what have you, um, I make sure I'm updated on that. And if there are any changes, I review them as soon as possible.
How do you maintain confidentiality when dealing with sensitive information?
That's an interesting one. Um, I've actually, uh, worked in certain fields. I did, um, newborn photos for a little while, which is lovely. Um, and I actually had to follow the rules of HIPAA while I worked there because I worked in a hospital. Uh, the same goes for education. We have a lot of pretty strict rules on what you can say and what you can't say outside of work. Um, so for the most part, obviously it goes without saying, I don't discuss workplace situations with people uh, in any sort of detail if I know they're confidential. And as well, if I have something I need to talk about or I need to resolve, I make sure I'm speaking to a coworker who I know is also involved in that situation. So I'm not breaking any sort of confidentiality, um, in that regard.
Thank you.
Can you describe your experience with using software or databases for record keeping and data man- management?
Yes, uh, I've had several instances where we've used different softwares. I have familiarity with, uh, Microsoft products. Um, I briefly worked as a quality control inspector where we would record measurements, um, data changes and items we were manufacturing, uh, requirements for items we were manufacturing. Um, so we used Excel, um, uh, Microsoft Word, things like that. I've also used a lot of, um, Google products. So essentially the same, the same version, just, you know, Google Docs, uh, Google Spreadsheets, things like that. I also have some experience in, um, Adobe software, more within the realm of, uh, photography, editing, things like that. Um, but I've always found it really easy to pick up as well. So I don't typically struggle with newer programs.
Okay.
Okay. Um. Can, how do you ensure that paperwork and documentation are completed accurately in a timely manner?
Uh, first and foremost, of course, um, I, I ask how the, um, my manager or who else it might be in that case, I make sure I confirm what exactly they want done and how they want things filed or written or whatever else. Um, and then I also make sure just to have things submitted in time. Uh, I know which deadlines are closest, which are furthest and what's the priority so that I can get those done in the order that uh, best suits the, the needs of the, the workplace.
Can you discuss your approach to collaborating with other departments within the local community?
Yeah, um, I definitely have a lot of experience with that, especially in education, um, just because I worked in all departments, uh, kinder three. Uh, I try to approach everyone just as friendly as possible, as kindly as possible, especially if I am speaking to a department that maybe I don't have that much experience with. Um, just because I, I never want to assume I know more than someone who's, whose job it is to do a specific thing. Um, it just generally, I, I try to be really friendly and approachable and, and listen as much as I can.
Sarah, can you tell us about a suggestion that you've made that has benefited an organization you've worked for?
Yeah, um. A couple that come to mind, uh, more recently, um. I worked, um, well, in education, I worked in special education. Um, and I actually for a classroom for the fourth fifth, I made a couple of suggestions in the layout of the room and the way the desks were arranged, just because we were experiencing some, some behavioral issues between specific students. Um, and I was really happy. It actually, uh, it helped a lot and it helped some of those conflicts diminish or totally disappear. Um, so I was, I was really pleased with that. I was glad it worked.
Okay, thank you.
What is there about this position that really entices you and attracts you the most?
Oh, um, partly, I would say it is kind of what I mentioned before, uh, I'll, I'll be living on Ocam and I've not really been involved in my community too much up to this point. Um, but I've definitely wanted to, so I like the idea of that and just being able to be helpful for the place I live. Uh, as well as I always like learning new things and trying out new things. So it is similar to jobs I've had, but not exactly the same. And I, I definitely, um, would look forward to sort of learning more about that.
Um, Sarah, what would you say are your top three skills that make you the best candidate for this position?
Hmm. Um, I would say it is that I am organized. Uh, I work really well on my own. Um, and I have fairly good customer service skills, so I'm good at interacting with people, speaking to people. I've been told I put people at ease pretty easily. So I think those three skills.
Oh, so, um, this, uh, position that you've applied to is a per diem position. Um, uh, about how many hours would you be hoping to have, uh, in a week? Um, if a, uh, another position with maybe more hours, uh, let's say fifteen were to come up, is that something that you would be interested in?
Um, I believe, uh, I just want to clarify, I think I was told this position would probably be like one to five a week depending. Was that, okay? Um, yeah, so at least for the fifteen hours, I think I probably wouldn't be able to take on that just because I, I will be working an additional job outside of this if I do have this position. Um, so it would just, it would make things a little bit tricky. Um. Yeah.
And just so you know, that's, that's not a wrong answer. It was just the if a position in the future were to come up. So that's, that's fine.
No, no. I think everything went well.
Sarah, do you have any questions for us?
Yeah, I, I was actually a little bit curious just about the nature of, um, whether this is independent work, sort of work from home or in person. I'm just trying to figure out how it would work, um, with my, my, um, main job.
I would say ninety-nine percent of it's gonna have to be here at the town hall because you're gonna be interacting with citizens.
Gotcha, okay.
Yep.
And then there's, there's a state computer, um, that information is entered in. So um, you get, they send out daily or mu- yearly census and information is entered into this system. When people register to vote, I believe it's entered into that particular system. Um, um, so really, I think it is definitely in, in person.
You have to be here to keep up with all the changes that make to with the systems.
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay. All right, that answers my question. Um. I think outside of that, uh, I'd be curious to know, I always like to ask people, what's your favorite thing about working there?
Um, so we're volunteers essentially. We do get a, an annual stipend. Um, I think if you average all the hours, so, um, we, we give money back. Um, but, um, uh, I, I think it's about uh, same reason you're interested in this position, uh, being part of your community and giving back to your community in some way. Um, and so it's having that opportunity for me.
I just like being able to handle many different opportunities in the town, many different boards to work with. But all kinds of different people with different interests and I just enjoy working with the people.
Uh, I too, I, I'm retired. But I'm retired from municipal government, I've been in municipal government forty-two years. Um, thirty of that are managerial, managerial capacity. And I just felt that I could give more to my town with my background. You know, I've seen that I've been on the other side. So it's worked out pretty well. Anybody have anything else?
No.
No, I don't have anything else.
Sarah?
Uh, I think that was about all the questions I had.
Okay. Well, we appreciate you coming in and talking with us and we will be in touch.
Nice meeting you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Nice to meet you.
Nice meeting you too. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
But have anything else on the interviews?
Nope.
This is on the agenda for Tuesday. Discussion appointment.
And right now have we officially closed, um, on Indeed, right? Did we close this one on Indeed or was it even on Indeed?
I don't think this one was on Indeed.
Okay, no.
But I, I'm, I'm comfortable that, um, with, between these three applicants, there would be no need for, um, additional, yeah.
I agree.
Yep. Next on the agenda is the Maya twenty-two, twenty-two. Public official liability and law enforcement professional liability.
They have not been filled out, but I just want to bring them to the board to make sure that.
Oh, these are the question.
Yeah, yeah, every year.
Yep. These are the usual question.
Your usual, yeah.
So we should authorize these to be filled out.
Are these, um, is that online?
No, you can short it in.
Okay, I've never seen those reports.
Oh, yeah, if you want, I'm not, so you can, got it. I can forward it to you.
It can be scanned. We can use Adobe.
Vote out.
Can you imagine some of this progressive thought? It's the future.
Notice they're very policy conscious in those areas.
I know. How do we answer them?
No.
The best.
Working on it.
Okay.
They don't expect
Yeah.
everything, but.
Yeah, I'd be interested to see what the results are, um, from the questions. Um, and then I'd also be interested to see, um. I don't really know anything about Maya. Is it possible to get like, uh, a meeting with them to understand what our Maya relationship is? I know when I was at the MMA conference, they had like a Maya breakfast or something. Um, and I was like, if you were a member, you could go, but I didn't get any information on it. So I was not sure a hundred percent if we were members. Um, but like it, that's a, a like, public official liability. I'm curious what that actually covers.
Uh, can show you the policy.
Yeah, I'd love to. I mean, if there are other policies online.
Um, those wouldn't be online. Those are right from the insurance.
Okay, okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
But, you know, for next year or for September, they do come out.
Oh, do they?
At least twice. And they go, the first time they came out with the new policy for the new year coming in, they go through everything. They go through just about every page and say, this is the same as you had last year, but this is our change for this year. So they're quite detailed when they do that.
And I rep just retired, so there will be a new
New rep.
person.
But the other person we worked with retired also, didn't he?
That was for the, he was the liability on
Liability.
Collision and all that. Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
So he was more, uh, he did too retire, but Joanne, who's been, she's done all the surrounding towns.
At the, at the meeting on Monday, I sat next to the executive director of Maya from Framingham, I guess. Um, and, uh, he talked about, you know, the insurance state right now and, um, uh, right now it seemed to have leveled off. Um, talked about the health insurance situation. Where we basically have two options in Massachusetts, this one point, which is Tufts and Harvard Pilgrim and Blue Cross Blue Shield. Um, some towns had two percent increase in, in health insurance up to I think a little bit under ten. And I think we were probably closer to the nine. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, which depending upon who you have as employees, that number, the risk.
On your claims.
Yeah.
They review your claims every year and that's where they base that off of. Now with Maya, if the claim is going up, say fifteen percent, they have backup funds to offset that.
Mm-hmm.
So they would bring it down to a more of a level.
Nice.
Level thing. And that's why we advocated to go to Maya.
Yeah.
Um, cause if you go out on your own, you don't have that.
Yeah, no.
And if you go to the other health insurance company like Rutland did, they don't have any backup either. So they're rolling the dice.
Yeah, but the Maya, is that purchased Blue Cross? Is it a Blue Cross?
Blue Cross, yeah. Yeah.
It's actually the same insurance that they had under Robin. It's just under the
Different policy setup.
But yeah. Overall, their, their insurance wasn't drastically changed.
Not, it should be the actual benefits.
Yeah.
It didn't happen changed, but
Yes.
We have more control over it now.
Right.
Right.
Than you have before.
And Maya is all a municipal. And so that's nice to have that. Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, it does say my insurance policy. I wonder if that's coverage, yeah, from December. Yeah, so I would move that we authorize the, um, Board of Selective Selectment Administrative Assistant to complete those, um, forms.
Second.
On paper.
Bye.
It's, uh, treasurer collector payroll.
No, that was me.
Okay.
Well, I know that the treasurer collector informed the board a little while back that
She did.
Um, the wages in her line item were depleted and wouldn't be enough to cover her pay for the remainder of the year. So it's come to that point. So currently, right now, I think there's six hundred and thirty dollars left in the um, account, which will not cover this pay period fully and then anything moving forward. Um, I asked Wendy to just, uh, if she can do a little breakdown, it just so she's saying it needs seven warrants um, at thirty hours a week, plus adding some additional hours, which she calculated.
A pay period.
Yeah, sorry, prepare, prepare. But an additional twenty-six hours for one week because of the audits.
The audits, yes.
Um, both the, and the financial review. Uh, so a total of ten thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars deducted the six hundred and thirty dollars and twelve cents that she has there. So a grand total of nine thousand, nine eighty-nine, eighty-eight. So she rounded it up just to an even ten thousand dollars is what probably would be needed to cover the remaining of the fiscal year. And clearly the twenty-six hours is an estimate. If it's less, obviously, you know, that would be better, but she just figured. So the question is, where would that come from? I know she has, um, one outstanding bill that she's covering. So I don't know. I don't think she, uh, has a whole, I, I don't know if she has anywhere else to pull for.
Can you pull the latest report from the accountant? I think it was the March.
Yeah.
Expenditures.
Spend just, see what the balance in the Medicare account is.
Can we transfer that in April?
May first.
First.
May.
But she don't have enough money for this.
For this, at least two warrants. Cause we got another warrant in
This one.
We got this one and we have another one in April.
Yeah. I mean, since it's a wage and hour issue, is the accountant able to deficit?
I don't know.
I can't imagine we can legally not pay, but.
Right, we can't.
I don't, I don't see why she can't.
Yeah.
Knowing that we're gonna do a transfer May first. It'd be different if we had nowhere to go.
Right, right.
See, um, Lori, right?
Magic expenditure. Um, we're looking for Trevor. No, what are we looking for?
Yeah, it's under the treasurer.
Yeah, it's under the treasurer, but it's, uh, with the health insurance and
The benefits.
That line item.
Treasurer collectors, we got contracts, payroll, bond, education, um, wages, salary.
It was toward the bottom.
Contracts. Treasure foreclosure.
Should be coming up.
Um.
Pleasure.
Um, conservation. Town hall. Municipal building.
No, I think it would be.
It has the county retirement, group insurance, Medicare. Nothing else.
Lot of assessment. Cemetery. Treasurer debt principal expenditures, treasurer debt. Uh, short-term interest borrowing, cherry sheets, motor vehicle tax, we might be getting close. Employee benefits.
Yep.
Um, so there's treasurer, employee benefits, Worcester County Retirement, unemployment, group insurance, is that the one?
Uh, keep going, it's Medicare.
Town share Medicare?
Yep.
We've got thirty-seven percent left. Um, it says available twenty-three thousand.
And that says of March.
Thirty-seven percent left, you said?
Uh, thirty-seven point four percent, um, and available is seven thou- uh, seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars. Sorry, seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-one is left. Thirteen thousand is available in, uh, group insurance.
Yeah, we're gonna expend all of that. That's pretty much close to the penny.
Yeah.
Um, we have, if we have seven there, we have three thousand in unemployment.
Yep.
There's ten thousand that can be transferred May first.
Mm-hmm.
They doubt we're gonna get any unemployment.
Although the fraudulent claim, don't we have to pay that?
Pay.
Yeah, but.
I mean, what are they gonna do?
She's not paying.
Yeah, good. I, I don't think we should. What are they gonna do? Finest?
Not paying it. So there is money there. We have to ship from one account to the other in May. If not, it'd be a reserve fund transfer.
That's what reserve is for. I don't think we should use ARPA, um, when we have the reserve fund.
No.
So.
And the reason some of this has gone over is because we had a change with the treasurers.
Mm-hmm.
Um, partial part of it was the old treasurer left July sixth, which was the new fiscal year. So we owed the vacation time, the new fiscal year, we had to pay that out. No additional funds were put in for FY twenty-four because we didn't know she was leaving. So if we had known that, we could have planned it.
Did we have a contract too or no?
We had a contract in the interim for maybe four or five weeks.
Yeah, probably at a higher rate.
At a higher rate. He was doing the clerical and we made the adjustment to compensate for that. So there was more, more money used. And then, uh, when we negotiated, the new one's salary was higher than the old one. So we knew we were coming into the situation. This is not a shock.
Right.
We know this.
Yeah.
Just one of those things when you have somebody leaving mid-year like this. And not to mention, you have somebody new coming in who has to learn all that, even though they're a certified collector treasurer. They've got to learn this procedure here.
And, and normally you have overlap.
Yes.
So you'd be paying two people.
Right.
For at least, should be two weeks at least.
Right. Well, this is the whole thing with succession plans, you know, these municipalities don't get it.
Yeah, we, we budget so tight that it doesn't allow for any flexibility.
Not much.
Um, so. I, I would say you can use what's left in the, uh, benefit.
Medic, uh, the, um.
Medicare.
Is it Medicare and, uh, unemployment.
So seven and three.
Yeah.
It's two thousand, nine hundred forty-six seventy-six.
Two thousand, nine hundred.
Forty-six seventy-six is unemployment. And town share Medicare is seven thousand, four hundred eighty-one sixty-four. Which will be over ten thousand. Yeah.
Is that the balance left?
Yes. How much, how often are we using this?
That's what I'm thinking, um.
The unemployment, we won't use, but the town share Medicare, that's still gonna draw down for the rest of the year.
So what did we expended already?
Uh, we've expended. Year-to-date, one. Let's see, we've expended year-to-date twelve thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars.
Okay.
And thirty-six cents of a budget of twenty thousand.
So we're averaging about thirteen hundred dollars a month.
Twelve seventy-two forty-eight, uh, is for the period.
There you go.
That's, uh, twelve twenty-four thirty-six.
Like reserve fund.
It'd be easier just to. So I would move that we request that, um, ten thousand dollars be, uh, requested to be transferred. Uh, from the reserve fund to cover, um, ten thousand dollars in treasurer collector wages. To complete the fiscal year.
Second.
And we'll request that to go to the finance committee.
Believe they're aware of this.
Yes.
I think, yeah, it's anyway.
Not a shock to them. Okay, next up, we have the highway superintendent interview discussion, possible vote. We have three applicants. One went through or two went through. Any initial thoughts from anybody?
I think, uh, for me, after watching all of it, I went back to, um, the. Job description. Looked at what we are, um, looking for. Um, reflected on the fact that we've had two highway superintendents, probably.
Long time.
We regularly say and hear that our roads are. Good, great compared to other communities. Um, we can always count on being able to get out of O-CAM. And then you get stuck somewhere else, over the line. And, you know, why is that? Um, I would say it's been leadership. Competency. Confidence. Management. That has likely been part of that. And those are, we don't wanna have our roads go the wrong direction. We don't want to have revolving doors. Of employees. I think we've been pretty steady of who's worked here over the years. And, um, we've gotten grants, our, our chapter ninety, as far as I'm aware, has never had any issues. Um, and so then I look at the three, the three candidates and. Who can lead, who can manage, who can ensure our grants don't go, uh, in the wrong direction. Uh, that our budgeting doesn't go in the wrong direction. Um, and, uh, it's a lost, I think. Um, probably through the hole. Um, let's put a piece of paper up there to hold it. Um, so, um, I think, uh. Honestly, I believe out of the three, only one of them had, uh, supervisory experience. Um, managing staff. And, and for me, that's the number one thing that. I wanna make sure that whoever is in that position can manage, can lead. And will be able to do the job of the higher level. Not just plowing, not just doing mechanics, because. We don't have anybody else in O-CAM that, um. Does chapter ninety, you know, it should be responsible for doing the budgets. Um, and, um, it's not an on-the-job training. Um, to become a manager, uh, and to oversee what I think is. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget. Um, and we're responsible for making sure that, I think that's like the biggest department financially.
It is.
And we're accountable to the taxpayers. That we are putting someone in that position who is going to be in charge. Um, uh, at least be able to be responsible, answer the tough questions. Set a vision, um, enunciate that vision. Um, and, um, so, uh, and I, so out of the three, um, right now. Um, I would only be able to find one that would, um, meet that criteria.
For my, for myself. At this particular moment, after looking at all three candidates. They all brought a certain strength, but they also, to me, brought certain weaknesses. And I would feel more comfortable having a second go at interviewing them and maybe changing some other questions. That I would want to ask and see, and I would actually like to do a second interview. If you want to choose two out of the three that was the strongest, that would be fine. I would like to see, to do the, the interview on site. I would like the applicant to be able to see exactly what it is they're going to be working with before they make their decisions as well. And I'd like to see a little more input from some of the applicants. I, I was a bit disappointed because after the interviews we had today. I liked, because they all had questions for us. Our applicants for highway had no questions for us, for the town or anything. And I, I found that to be a little bit unusual. Nobody asked what equipment we had. How we sand salt our roads. Where the culverts were. I mean, they didn't ask anything specific. I would have liked to have seen that from their perspective.
I, I can agree with the second round of interviews to get a little more in depth with, but I do not. Agree with cutting it to two. We've only got three. And two of them are very close. You know, with background stuff, so I would say bring all three of them back. Up there at the highway.
Are we able to zoom up at the highway? Okay, that, that was my one concern was, can we do it, do it by phone or however?
I would just suggest, um, that because we're the public body. Maybe Kevin. Do a tour of, or one of us with Kevin, do a tour of the equipment. We hang out in the, the room where the Zoom is.
Yep.
And then they come in and that's when the meeting, the interviews begin.
Yeah.
Um, or, yeah, or we switch off one, I don't know. We probably don't wanna do one with, like, each candidate, but. Uh, cause then you're really getting one extra perspective.
No.
Um, but yeah, I think, um, having somebody go over it with them, uh, in a public forum or not in a public forum. Um, would be better, and then we come together.
Yep.
Um, but I do think, you know, as I did, you know, this is a big decision.
It's a huge decision.
Sixty years of, of experience, essentially, with, I think, two people.
Yeah.
Um, and, um, so we've gotta make sure we ranked. What is it that we believe is most important in the candidate? Um, and I really feel like that's what we have to make the decision based upon.
Oh, I agree.
Is.
I agree.
What do we need? So I don't know how we do that, and because we don't wanna, you know, do that today. And then give everybody, uh, a week to, um, watch the video and go, okay, that's what they're looking for.
Yeah.
Answers, so I think we would have to really come to that meeting with that and then. Discuss it.
We can each write our own questions down and.
Yes.
That.
Share them.
Share them.
Yep.
Yeah.
And just go into the meeting and then we'll just.
Cause right now, after having had the interview and them not asking question, I have.
Yeah.
A little more questions now that I want to ask them to get a little more specific details from some of them and I. Specifically for one of them, I have more detailed questions.
And as long as we're all asking each candidate the same question.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So.
I would also like to suggest, at least as we're going through the site visit. I want to include the office as well, because the people who don't live in town that are applying have no idea what. That municipal building even looks like. It'll give them a chance to get a feel for it and maybe they won't like it. I don't know.
I mean, and honestly, if, if Kevin were able to meet with them.
I think it would be.
At any point.
Right.
Between now and the interviews, but then we have our scheduled interview day.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't necessarily know that we have to necessarily meet up there if they've already done their tour, since we're not gonna be necessarily part of it.
They wanna do it that way, yeah, have them meet individually with Kevin.
A possibility.
Yeah.
Um.
But I just think it's important for Kevin to be there to explain the paperwork, because I know I can't do it.
Yeah, yeah.
And I don't think any of us have done chapter ninety or any of the state funding.
No.
Not that.
So I think they need to see all of that, because they were not all.
Yeah.
Conversed with that.
And, and I would, um, I'm comfortable doing the three, in inviting all three.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I wonder if we could do it at six o'clock, uh, a six o'clock meeting night.
Oh, yeah.
Um, yeah, and, um.
The sun will be out, so that'll be fine.
Yeah, um, but it, it may mean that more people from the community will come, but we do need to. It is an interview and it, it's not public comment and, um. But at least people will be able to see the exchange and, and that we've put a lot of effort into, um. Making the right, the best decision we can for O-CAM.
Yep.
And I would try to get it up within the next week if possible. Might be tight. Oh, we don't have a need, we don't have a meeting the following Monday night.
We do now.
So maybe if we could schedule our interview the following Monday night and they have next week.
Yeah.
The twenty-second? Is that what you mean? Are we gonna cease the every week meetings?
Well, not till we're actually presenting the budget to. Checked your emails today, there's some.
I have not, and I was. Somebody said, it's time to go now.
And there was an email, just so you know, I don't know if the board saw from the current superintendent.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah. So until we sign off on the budget and give it to them. I think our meeting, we should just go over things.
Yeah, and we still have the article that we're waiting from town council.
The articles we need to really pay attention to.
And if we can keep it to the Monday or Wednesday, I'm okay. Um, those are. Um, just not, uh, the first week of May, I'm not available. I'm gonna be in Florida. Six through that.
We could tentatively put it on the twenty-second.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And how many questions? Uh, and you know what? We were also a little time crunched. Um, I, I, I think. You know, maybe there was a little pressure of, okay, I know there's someone else coming in right after me, um, so we probably do wanna schedule. I don't know, thirty minutes might be okay, since it's the second round. Um, but, um, how many questions do you think? We, so this was twelve questions today. And I think it was nine questions for the highway.
Yeah.
And it was about twenty minutes each.
Um, no, we did half hours.
No, I mean, I think they actually.
Actually took twenty minutes, but we gave them thirty. We'll do the same thing, give them.
Three questions each.
Three questions.
Yeah.
But the only risk that we run into is we may end up coming up with the same three questions.
Have a couple extras.
Like this.
Like, if we're, each of us is coming up with questions and not, um, sharing them.
Okay.
Um.
Well, we can share our questions.
Okay, okay.
That's, uh, meeting prep stuff.
So we submit it to Maribel as our.
Yeah.
Questions. Um, and then Maribel can say, oh, that's a duplicate. Can you come up with another one? Um.
Yeah.
Okay. And, and if we could, I'd love to have that before the weekend, um, to know what our questions are gonna be.
This weekend?
No, no, no.
Next.
Thank you.
Um, no, I'm trying to balance my, uh, work-life balance.
Oh, good, good for you, good for you.
Um, so, no, next weekend, by next Friday night.
So I was thinking, this is Friday already, isn't it? No, that'd be fine. I, I could agree with all of that.
So.
Be fine.
Four twenty-two, twenty-four for the second round of interviews for all three candidates at six P M.
Yep.
Yep.
At the.
Here.
Here.
Oh, right.
Yep.
But you'll reach out to Kevin and let him know that we're asking him to make himself available. Flexible.
So am I gonna set that up with the candidates to meet with?
I think, can they just connect?
Yeah, I was gonna say, have them connect with Kevin.
Okay.
They can get their own schedule.
And, but to report back to you so that we know that all three of them are set.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
And if we could do that to.
So that obviously you would want that done prior.
All three of them to go at the same.
No, 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 no. If, like, let's say one's available on Tuesday, one's available on Thursday. Um.
So by the time we meet with them, they will have already done their side visits, so we won't have to worry about Zoom then.
No, cause we can do it here.
We'll do it here, come back, and that would be.
Cause it's like setting up a time to come in. Oh, actually, this meeting will be in the evening.
Yeah, and, and I mean, I, I think Kevin is invested. And so I'm sure he can, he'd be willing to, if it was a five o'clock. For twenty minutes to meet with somebody after, on the way home from work or.
Right.
Um. But I think that's a really good idea. Let him see it, let them ask him questions. But I think that's a really good idea. Let him see it. Let them ask him questions.
Hmm.
Um, and then maybe they'll have questions.
Oh, yeah, that's gonna save it.
Yeah, what did you learn? What do you? What would you improve? Like, what new equipment would you get?
That was that was going to be one of my questions. Okay, you have seen everything that we have. If you are chosen. What's the first thing you want to buy?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, a- and maybe, you know, drive around the town. Um, and look at the culverts and look at the bridges.
That's what I expected from them before they came here to do a little background work.
Yeah.
On the town that you want to work for and work with. Know something about it. And that's why I asked them all of well, I didn't. One of them I didn't have to because I know he knows all the roads, but two of them I know did not know the roads. And I asked. You know, did you have a chance to go out and look at the roads and see what they are? Neither one of them had.
Yeah. So assuming all three are able and willing to do this. Um.
The only thing they, I'm thinking they might not because that means they they've been here once. They're gonna go with Kevin and then they're gonna come back again. That would make three times for them. I mean, for me, if they're interested in the job, they'll do it.
Do they want the job?
Right.
They want the job, they'll do it.
I think so. I think they will. Um, and and we want somebody who's willing to put a little bit of extra.
Yes.
Because it, this is a twenty-four seven job.
Exactly.
That's what they have to understand. They're on call no matter what.
This is a little bit of a taste of what it will be like. Um, but. You know, I also looked at the area and all the other positions that are open. Um, so that's why I'm not at this point interested in reopening it. Um, because I don't know that we're gonna get.
Anybody.
Another set of three candidates.
Yeah.
Brooklyn just hired.
I saw that, yeah. Yeah, but it was since December?
Over a year.
Okay.
Yeah, you said it was.
They had a consultant or an interim.
Well, yeah, the interim was the retired one from Rutland.
And they had, I think they still have two, like a foreman and a laborer. Hardwick has two openings. I think Rutland has.
Yep.
Yeah.
So.
Oberson's advertising over a year.
And the pool of possible workers is getting smaller.
In every municipal job.
And everywhere.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
So, okay.
So I think timely, time is of the essence in connecting.
Yes. We want them before next winter.
Yes.
Okay, I just thought of something. The highway budget with the contracted plowing. That item hasn't been touched.
Really?
No, it's no. That's for outside plows.
Oh, so we didn't have to use.
We didn't use it.
We've got ten thousand sitting there.
Didn't have to.
Training for, because right now we don't have a budget.
So I was thinking.
Yeah.
May first, you can transfer that. Up so you have an overlay. Training.
Yeah. I think that needs to be the plan. We can't have somebody start July fifth.
No, no. Cause we have to know enough to let them. Notify their employers right now that they're leaving in one week, two weeks. And then when are we going to get them to so they can train a little bit?
Yeah.
And pay them because you're gonna have to pay them during training.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Board, have any new business?
No.
No, any old business?
Yes. Do you want to bring it up?
I don't know what you're bringing. Uh, I have two things.
Give it the easy one first.
Oh, so the easy one, this is open still till five P M. The warrants, the article request. Uh, but today is the deadline at five P M. And so far, these are the ones that have been received. Um. I just got two this morning from the Board of Assessors office. Couple from the police department, from a couple from fire highway.
The usual.
Oh, two from Pencom, yeah.
Six thousand dollars for the assessors reevaluation stabilization, which we do every year. I think next year is the reeval.
F Y twenty-five, yeah.
And they're looking, Bencom wants to study uh center school stabilization fund for the repairs. We know that's gonna be expensive, but can get a jump on it, fifteen thousand.
Okay, that's good. No, it's a start anyway.
Have we had any luck um scheduling um? Somebody to go look at the boiler?
No, I actually left a message. Um, so I'll follow up with that.
Okay.
Um, we'll try the two. Inspectors in town and anybody else that I can.
Yeah.
Three of fire. Highway and police, and they're all the same thing.
Okay, so they're asked for the same one thing?
They're asking for the town to adopt the retiree insurance law.
Okay.
All three departments are requiring, have requested.
Resoundingly, okay.
Yeah.
Well, they all have full-time employees, so.
And they have the proper wording and everything for it?
Well, they've got the statute. So that was on last year's.
Yeah.
War.
Yeah.
So uh, Fire also has a revolving fund account.
Yeah.
To uh permit fees would be assistant paying for training. Great, so.
So on this, um, uh, the finance ones, it says to use free cash. So the free cash that right now would be a negative, well, we would exhaust.
We don't know if he included that already.
Otherwise.
It's a negative.
Okay.
Okay, I expected something different from this department.
Like I said in that meeting, budget does not have to be balanced. Special town meeting with additional.
Yes.
Okay, I had expected something different. On one of them.
Purchase the replacement on new cruiser. A new cruiser. The police on a capital stabilization. Account. I don't think it has enough money in it. I believe it's thirty-three thousand in there. And whatever we put in this year.
And whatever, that's it, whatever we put in.
Was it fifteen a year?
Eleven.
Eleven.
It's eleven.
Eleven.
Bencom suggested at one of our meetings that we bump it to fifteen because the cost of those things rolling up. But we haven't decided on that.
Okay.
Cause the eleven was based on the interest that they were charged when they used to lease.
When they leased them, yeah.
The vehicles. Now that they're not leasing them, they're just saving the interest on it.
The Board of Assessors want to adopt section of the law to authorize the assessors to plant. Real and property tax abatements up to a hundred percent. Members of the National Guard and Reservists that are on active duty.
Is that um that adoption of a new one or is that the up to a hundred percent because it was only fifty percent?
Doesn't say.
Cause there was one, something I read about going from four hundred to eight hundred.
That's.
For veterans.
That's probably they have to adopt the law first.
Yeah.
Okay, maybe that's the second one.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one, four hundred to eight hundred.
Okay, so then.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
That's the veterans one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's what they put in the budget.
Yeah.
And this is to adopt the law, period.
Right, and there are other laws out there for abatements that um.
Yeah.
We don't currently have, which I wish they would look at.
Right. I was talking with Diane about that this morning when she stuck in.
Like the seniors, the volunteering.
Yes, yes.
And, yeah, and if we're going to continue to have increasing house values, we won't have any seniors living in Oakham. Um, so. And then we're gonna have McMansions um with uh. Lots of kids and. Not enough tax base to. For them.
So it'll be like every other town.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah.
How do they come up with an estimate of um cost for um the new uh abatement? For the National Guard. I think we only, I'm only aware of one who's currently in guard. Do they have to come? They must have to come up with a budget number.
Well, yeah, um, don't you have a list of all the veterans?
The the town clerk has a list of all the veterans, yeah.
Yeah, it is quite few.
But it's active duty National Guard Reserve would get in a hundred percent abatement.
Yeah, I think that was one.
Yeah.
Cause I think on our list of veterans, I think it's something like a hundred twenty-five. Some of them, of course, have since passed. I don't think we've really replaced anything. They are just diminishing in number.
We didn't take a vote to place though, so.
Right.
Just accepting for future meeting to place. I don't want anybody to think replacing it.
Right.
Well, it's technically still open, so.
Yeah.
That's right, it is.
It's up to our discretion to use any of them, isn't it? So if we had a question on one or two of them. It would take a vote of the board to say, yes, we'll put that on or no, we won't put that on.
But do they still have time, though, to do a citizen's petition?
We haven't set the.
War.
The war.
Okay.
They should have, yeah, yeah.
What was the other thing?
It was the uh contract for the website with Revice. I know Aaron did. So we got the, as you know, the grants. Aaron did a lot of the footwork in um. Getting the quotes between Civic Plus, which is what we currently have, Revice and MuniBit. Um, MuniBit didn't have what the town required and offered, so they were right off the table. And so then it was between Revice and Civic Plus. Um. We were under the impression that Revice was had a state contract bid. So you could proceed with them being still the, a little bit of the higher cost. It wasn't that much more, but it was still higher. Long story short is that after all that, they do not have a state contract bid. They were, what they provided was showing that they are vendored, a vendor on comp buys, but they don't have the contract bid. So therefore, that's null and void. We cannot follow that because we have to follow the proper procurement. Which I did provide the account of the three quotes that we already had received. And Revice would be the highest bidder. I explained that MuniBit didn't have what we needed, so that's off the table, but still is still higher than Civic Plus. Which can offer. What we need, it might not be what the layout we want, but that the scope of work. So that's where we stand at. So that. Has to be kind of not followed. Um, I did speak with or through email with Sean from the um Revice and he. You know, understood and I told him I would let him know how things will proceed.
Okay.
So can we uh do a side-by-side comparison of all of the features? To make sure that we're, let's say, in one of them, make sure the other one has that feature and we're being charged for it. And then say, hey, you don't have that feature, add that. Um, and then see where the prices come down. Cause they don't all have, they don't both have the same amount of features. The Revice has more features than Civic Plus.
Right.
What we need to do is set out a, like, if we were going to bid the same type of procedure. Do the specs that we're looking for, present it to those companies.
So do a bid instead.
Give me a price based on what we want. And this is what we want.
Yeah.
Let's see how they come in.
Yeah, and a bid is required over fifty?
Fifty.
Right, but it would still, you would still fall under the three quotes. So I think you just need to know exactly the scope of work you want. And just get the quotes on both companies for the exact same thing, right?
I'm talking quotes.
I'm like, but right, because I'm like, we don't need to go to bid. Yeah, so you just want to get the specifications of the scope of work. So if this one, you know, offers A, B, and C, you want to get the.
A, B, and C from that.
The other one and then line it up.
Yeah, so which is kind of doing the comparison, making sure they each have the same. Yeah.
As long as we get our agendas up and stamped.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, and um, the only time thing we're up against is the. Uh, quarterly, you do have to extend a quarter each time.
Yeah.
Uh, with our existing old platform.
Yeah.
Um, so, um, okay.
But the new stuff is under the grant.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
So I will um. Have to figure out all the details and.
What we're looking, exactly what we're looking for.
And then just get new quotes with the new date. So it looks like it's a new, you know, you don't want to get a new quote from one and an old one from.
But we still need three?
Oh, you're gonna need three, yeah.
So we send it to MuniBit again?
MuniBit.
Yeah, you can't just assume it has, you have to have, or another company if you know of.
Okay.
Or take what you just said, send it to comp buys. They will put it on the state website and then you you opened up to.
Oh, where people can go in and.
Go in and say, okay, this town is looking for X, Y, and Z. Hey, I'll put a bid on that.
And you can do that if it's under the fifty?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay.
And who knows, you may end up with ten or twenty.
Yeah.
Different companies saying, well, we can do it for this. You know.
Okay.
So just a little bump.
Yeah. Um, and then other old business. Another bump, um. National Grid. So we started this the beginning of March. Uh, by calling, Maribel was on the phone trying customer service, no response.
I got different.
Horizon, no response.
Yeah.
Uh, I finally emailed saying I was a municipal government, wanted to talk to the municipal liaison. No response. Um, did it again, maybe a week later, finally got somebody who said, call this number. Community connections, the other ones that do it. So I called them and they said, okay, well, email this person. And you'll be all set. Put in an order. So I put in an order, crickets. So last week I said, oh, and then finally somebody wrote, I just checking to make sure. It was like to eight people. Did y'all see this email? Crickets. So I wrote back last Friday saying, this grant is due in a week. Um, we're a small rural community. This is all being volunteered done. Can you please get back to me? And yesterday at three o'clock, I got a call. Saying, you realize this can't just be done overnight? I said, do you realize we've been trying to get you for over a month? And um, and then she picked up the phone, called somebody else, like while I was on the phone, had no idea. It was like, are you talking to me? Um, and then she called Phoenix while I was on the phone. And they're like, well, how many poles? And do you have a picture? I'm like, I said, I can go count. No, it's not worth it. Um, so, um. They're on storm duty and you know the inconvenience this is and um, I said, okay.
Do they realize we pay the bill?
Uh, yeah, and 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 that we, when they want to put in a poll because. Guess who they have to come to? Um, but so they agreed that by eleven o'clock last night, they'd send me a proposal of worst case scenario. May the. Made a guess of how many poles, even though I offered to go drive it. Um, they guessed we had fifty-five poles. We have twenty-four, by the way. Um, and the estimate was four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the permits. And potential tree cuttings and, uh, moving of lines, and it just for National Grid. And oh, by the way, what you were told that it was not Verizon, Verizon also co-owns the polls. Um, so called Blythe at eight o'clock last night, because I had another meeting after the border health meeting I was on. And we agreed that we, that the four hundred fifty was completely unrealistic. It was never gonna cost four hundred fifty thousand dollars. They could run every single street in this town, and we might hit four hundred and fifty. So we put in for a hundred thousand dollars into the grant request. I told her that, I think I originally had estimated in my head from, from ARPA, if we were gonna do this on our own. I was thinking twenty thousand, I thought would be a reasonable ask for ARPA to do this project. And then we found out about the grant.
Right.
We found out the grant would be about sixty or eighty thousand, so obviously we wouldn't put sixty or eighty into ARPA.
Right.
But let's say it's a ten thousand dollar match. And let's say it was a hundred and ten thousand. I said to Blythe, I think I could make a case. To put, take twenty thousand from ARPA, and if we get the hundred and eighty thousand for the grant. Then we'd be able to move forward with it. Um, so we submitted it. Um, and then I emailed the Lieutenant Governor's Chief of Staff. Saying, I know that the Lieutenant Governor has been very involved in municipal broadband. And I just wanna share the small rural communities' experience with this process. So, um. And then I emailed them back and said, thank you so very, because then I got a response at like eleven o'clock. I'm sorry, we can't get you this estimate. I'm like, I'm confused, because I just got the estimate an hour ago. Um, so we can put in a request now to have the come out and actually evaluate at no cost. The twenty-four poles, are there any trees that need to be cut? Do any poles need to be replaced? And it takes two to three months for that, which will be fine. Because they're working on that, we're waiting on the state to decide if we get the grant.
Yeah.
And if they come in at a hundred thousand dollars, and we get the grant, we're good to go. If they come in at a hundred and fifty thousand, we'll apply next year. And we'll put in two hundred and fifty thousand for the ask, which is the average. Of what communities were getting in this grant. But for a half a mile. I'm sure these other towns are not a half a mile. So, um.
Yeah.
So that potentially may not happen, but it was worth the exercise and learning how we have to.
Yeah, wow, it is a process.
Well, let's see what happens.
And I don't know how many hours Blythe did, but it shouldn't have been many. Actually, I think we budgeted ten hours. I hope it's like three or four.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, just because I would hate to not get the grant and have spent that money, but. At least we'll know for the future how difficult it is to work with. Potential vendors. Um, and, oh, by the way, it's not community connections. They should have connected you with third-party applications or some.
Ouch.
That makes all the difference in the world.
Doesn't it, though?
Yeah.
So I'm gonna share that on Gobi's next call for anybody who's doing a municipal grant. And needs to get in touch with National Grid, but that's what should be on the grant application. They should give you that insight.
Yeah.
Because we're not used to having to do poll work.
Right.
True.
And so they make it much harder on a small town.
Yeah.
To get grants.
Yeah.
And yet, that's what they're supposed to be trying to get access for.
Well, they do, but they don't.
Yeah.
You know. Not for decisions or anything, but something we can discuss at a later meeting in depth. I think we're at a point where we either talk to Blythe or somebody about a, uh. How do we go about getting a firm to? Who needs assessment on this building? Well, the rest of the world falls in.
Well, when they were up there, I was actually afraid that they might come through the ceiling.
Yeah, that's true, too.
And I would also reach out to CMR PC, because I know they do this.
Uh, feasibility on building?
And it's part of the one-stop grant and the rural something.
Why don't we start with them? See if we can get some information for our future meeting and discuss it.
Connor, who's doing, he's the head of regional, blah, blah, blah. Um, he's the, the person to go to. He's working on the ADA grant.
Oh, okay.
And, um, Peter Durin's office helper, Jared, said to let him know what we need, if we need a feasibility study.
By Friday, by today. I think it was by three o'clock.
By today.
We sent something to them, didn't we?
Not this time around, I did not. I did, uh, last time.
He told us that when he was here that day.
Yeah.
And, um.
It was the, um, it was one.
Donna Palmer said to let her know at the, at the same time, too, because.
Fire truck, that was all then. Then we did another one. It wasn't, it wasn't.
We emailed, or at least.
What did we?
Individually, we emailed or something.
There was something that we said, we did the, I have to go look at my emails.
Yeah, but what you just said, the fire truck and all that, wasn't that for F Y twenty-five?
Yeah.
So we did.
I remember getting something.
So where else then?
Okay.
And we had the town hall on that.
Oh, was?
Yeah.
Okay.
I remember this, I mean.
So we'll be, we should see, I mean, he should have, they should have sent us their proposed amendments. Um, but they're all gonna be posted. I think they ought to be turned in by today, and then they start debate. Next week.
Okay.
On the amendments. So, and I actually, it's funny, the, the kid talked about the State House New Service. I just signed up for it. And I got my password today. Because I started reading the, the House bill where they cut. Rural funding.
Anything about cutting seniors more?
No.
No, oh, good, good.
But the, the fact that the, um, Gateway City's got a hundred and four dollars. Versus our thirty.
Thirty, yeah. Nineteen regional districts.
And guess where those regional districts mostly are? Rural.
Right. Right.
Because they're not in the eastern part of the state that has the most legislators.
I'm all set, I should.
Motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Well, David.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.